I call the Tuesday, June 22, 2021 Brockton School Committee to order. We have established a quorum on Zoom tonight as Ward Two School Committee member Cynthia Rivas-Mendez. We will now stand and salute our American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. We do want to thank BCA again for always helping us with recording. This is great tonight. We're in the George Rahm Little Theater. We actually have a lot of people here tonight, and that hasn't been in a long time. So we're joined by Superintendent of Schools Mike Thomas. We, on Agenda Item Number Two, hearing of visitors. There are none. We will now move on to Consent Agenda, which we have subsection A, B, C. Any school committee members have any questions or take any of those out of order?
Motion to approve Items A, B, and C.
Second.
Motion on the floor is properly seconded to take A, B, and C collectively. A is the approval of June 8, 2021, regular school committee meeting minutes. B is the acceptance of notification of personnel appointments, non-certified personnel, and C is the acceptance of notification of personal actions, leaves of absences, resignations, and retirements. There is a motion on the floor properly seconded. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries. Consent Agenda is hereby passed. We will now go on to Agenda Three, which is the report of the Superintendent of Schools, Mike Thomas. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have some recognitions. First, we have for Dr. Linda Cahill, our nursing supervisor. Linda is on Zoom with us tonight, but I wanted to spend some time recognizing Linda and thanking her for what she did, not only for the Brockton Public Schools during the pandemic, but what she did for the entire city. As you know, she served as the acting director of the Board of Health when asked by the mayor, and we were able to come to an agreement with Kim Gibson at the BEA to allow her to do that and serve in that role when we were closed down last March. I think it was into, I want to say, June, May, June, when she took over that, and then she did that through the summer and worked all the way through and then came back on the school side in what she did, not only serve in the city, what she did serve in the community, and just what she did with her nurses and recognizing all her nurses for the contact tracing when we came back to school, making sure everybody stayed safe, looking over our students and staff. So it's, you know, it's important for us to recognize Linda in what she did. It was a lot on one person, and she did a great job working closely after she returned to us as a supervisor of nurses, doing that job and still helping the Board of Health and the Brockton Neighborhood Health Center with the vaccine clinics. She was a major part of that. And then the vaccine clinics that came out to the schools, the one here at Brockton High and then the ones at our middle schools and at the Key Center as well. Her work was amazing, so we just wanted to thank her and recognize her.
Yeah, if I could just kind of follow up on what Superintendent said. Linda is just an awesome professional, and her and her team here on the school side saved lives, quite honestly. That's what happened. They saved lives. We collaborated with the Board of Health. When John McGary left, we asked if Linda would join us, and she did without question. She didn't hesitate, and that's what it means to be a dedicated professional. So she's become a great friend. We are on regular Zooms, Zoom, Zoom, Zoom. That's the new normal. But, you know, on the weekends, when we're still doing every Saturday, the Board of Health is doing it to Shaw Center. It's not just Board of Health nurses, school nurses, and Linda is there all the time as well. So I applaud you for what you've done, Linda, and we truly, truly thank you as a city and as a community. Thank you.
And Linda, when I see you, I have a nice certificate from the School Committee and the mayor, so, and myself, so we'll make sure. She's with us, correct? So Linda, the floor is yours.
Thank you, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. I much appreciate it. Can you hear me? Yes. I couldn't do it without the school nurses. They're just wonderful. They just jumped in and helped with the contact tracing and the clinics. And also, I'm appreciative of the Board of Health. They've been wonderful with Dr. Montessor and the nurses. And also, Dr. Herman has been wonderful, helping guiding us with the data on a daily basis. It's been truly a community effort in getting our numbers down and also getting our citizens vaccinated. Thank you very much.
Next, I want to welcome John McDonald, Guidance Counsel of the Pluff Academy. We also have Principal of the Pluff Academy, Principal Michelle Nezarella is with us. And I'm going to turn it over to John because we want to recognize the Galactic Girls, and everybody saw the article about them in the newspaper. We're so proud of these amazing students, and I'm not going to do it enough justice. I want John, who spent all this time with them and at the Pluff School, and it's just, the story is amazing, so I'll let John go over the whole thing for us, and then we want to recognize them.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas and the School Committee, Mayor. Nice to see you again, Mr. Minicello. Both of Mr. Minicello's sons attended Pluff Academy. So back in February, Kathy Ledger, who was the Director of Guidance here at the high school, had sent out an email to all of the Guidance Councilors about an opportunity. It was a contest that was being driven through American Student Assistance. And I approached my principal, and I said, listen, this is something that I want to try. Is it something that we could do? We were remote. Ms. Nezarella, as all of you know, is super supportive of the students, super supportive of the staff, so she's like, yes, run with it. Go, whatever you need. So I picked a specific group of kids, and at the Pluff, we have the two-way Spanish program, and they're great kids, they're hard workers. And I said, you know what? I'm going to pick this one class, and we're going to divide them into groups, and they're going to enter this contest. And I can tell you, from day one, each group was completely bought in. They were like, all right, let's do this. And matter of fact, one of the groups actually interviewed Mayor Sullivan, and unfortunately, that group didn't place, but we appreciate your, no, we appreciate your input. So our group, you know, it's hard because we started remote, and eventually, we got to the point where, you know, they got to really think about what they were going to really do. And we had the opportunity to interview the former, you know, Director of NASA's flight mission. This gentleman, his name is Todd May, you could actually Google him, and he's in charge of basically training all the astronauts. And it was a wonderful opportunity. He was amazed by how much our students knew, all the questions that they were asking. So I'd like to introduce our team. They are called the Galactic Girls, and to going left to right, we have Isabella Renaud. Come on down. We have Genesis Ponse. We have Abby Menzouetta, and we have Eliana Cabellin. Gabby Rodriguez is our fifth member, but she unfortunately is in California. She's traveling with family. So the unbelievable thing is that this contest spanned 13 different states, 23 different schools. There was almost 198 entries, and they beat everybody. And it awarded Pluff $10,000 in funding, and they're actually going to be on the committee for next year. They're going to be going into eighth grade to determine how to spend that money. And they also won $300 themselves. So they, and this is the first time that American Student Assistance has done this, so they made a really big deal out of it. It's been in all the, I mean, if you could go onto MSN.com, it's there. It's been in all the papers. It's really cool. So I'd like to introduce our two captains, Eliana and Isabella. They come on up and say something, and their families are here as well.
Hello, I'm Eliana.
I'm Isabella.
And we wanted to thank you for inviting us to come and letting us come. And we want to thank all of our teachers that really inspired us to work as hard as we did. And I remember sort of at the beginning of the school year, our science teacher, Ms. Duquette, who's seventh grade, eighth, no, seventh grade science teacher at Pluff, and our first lesson was about Mars, and it really, really interested us, which is why we chose building a colony on Mars, because we wanted to further our research and we wanted to learn even more. And I think that's like what inspired us to work so hard and to do what we did in our project. We did two models, one Mars test simulation, and Isabella drew blueprints of our hydroponics, which was our main idea. But again, thank you for inviting us.
[applause]
Pluff, and I drop my daughter off every morning, and every kid that goes to a Brockton Public Schools is a special kid, but I do want to just thank the Principal, Ms. Nezarella, because she's out there every single day. I see her sweeping the parking lot, so thank you. Thank you. But again, we're called the City of Champions, and you and your team, Galactic Girls, are definitely champions in our city, so thank you all. Thank you so much.
And we can pause a few minutes if anybody needs to leave.
Why don't we take a two-minute recess?
Yeah, we can take a recess. Unless you want to stay for the exciting events that are yet to come.
Next up, we have Dr. Ethan Cancella is with us, Christina Galant, and Mr. Kevin DePont, who is, who are working very hard on the development of our single district virtual school. As you know, we put an application into the Department of Education. They did respond to Mr. DiAgostino of some tweaks and updates we had to do. Ethan and a task force have been working on tweaking our application from the feedback we got from the Department of Education. Again, this would be, just to be clear, next year, there is no remote learning option. There is no hybrid option, so parents need to, you know, students need to be back in school full five days a week. There's no remoting into the classroom. There's no live teaching from the classroom. That's over. So a student or parent that wants to stay fully remote will have to enter into a virtual school, and we're trying to have that as a Brockton Public School option. So Dr. Cancella and his team have been working on this, and the feedback, I believe, came late last week from the Department of Ed, and they've been working on tweaking our application, and we do need a vote. Just the, this vote, the vote that you'll take tonight is to basically allow us to submit the application. Again, it does not mean that the Department of Ed will approve it, it's just that we're approving putting the application in.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I'm very excited to introduce the real driving force behind this application, which is, they call it a single district virtual school, which basically means it's only for Brockton. So this allegedly is going to work, except that it doesn't. Hmm. So it started with the superintendent's vision, and basically, Mike was pretty straightforward about it. He said he wants there to be a, an option, a choice for parents for those students who it works better to have a full remote option, that they can have a full remote option in Brockton with Brockton Public School curriculum, Brockton Public School teachers, and the opportunity, and this is, I think, what differentiates this school from other options out there that are external to our district. They would be able to participate in all of the activities of the Brockton Public Schools. So that's, that's an interesting wrinkle. But I do want to talk about, you know, Christina Galant and Kevin DePont. When Mike asked me to head this up, I was smart enough to know that in the super compressed timeframe that we had, I needed a really, really strong team to help out, and I couldn't think of two better people. I put a job ad out there, and they both applied for it, and I'm going to have them do the bulk of the presentation tonight, because honestly, they are the driving force behind this, along with a really strong steering committee. But you'll hear more about that. So we'll go to the next slide, and Kevin, you can take it away.
Thank you, everybody, for having us here tonight. I'll quickly go over our, our process and where exactly we are in that process. So like Ethan said, how Mike had a vision about having this virtual school. I'm not sure if you heard of James R.A., what's his name, from, from Field of Dreams saying, if you build it, they will come. And so that's kind of how it's worked out. So there's a couple, there's a couple pieces here that we'll quickly go over. The first thing was, we need to see if there was interest out there. So as you know, there's around 4,000 students that remained fully remote up until, you know, June or so, it was probably around 2,500 households. So around the end of April, we surveyed that group and wanted to know how many of those households will still be interested in a possible remote option in September. And keep in mind, a lot has changed from April to now with the state and vaccines and even us all here together. And so we did that piece in April, all right? And then last week, so we, and so last week, we also did an additional survey to see out of those 400 people, out of those 400 households or so, how many of those were still interested in, in September. And so we had a good number. So that's the first group that we targeted. However, that's not the only group that was left, all right? There's a couple other groups that we also wanted to target. Another one that, that we're reaching out to is also our home schooled students, students that are being home schooled by their parents or a neighbor or some other person. So we're focusing on reaching out to them to see if this is an option for them as well. There's also students here in the Brockton Public Schools that actually attend state virtual schools, Greenfield, and there's one in Walpole that our students are attending. And then this also is reaching out to any, and like Ethan said, any student for the Brockton, for the Brockton Public Schools. Things change between now and September, and so this will be an option, like Mike said, for somebody who possibly has a medical condition or there's a family issue, that they would have this virtual option. And so that's why the interest is there, and that's why we've moved on to this piece, right? The next piece of why we're doing this is we really want to strike where the iron is hot. Over the past year, we and you here in the committee, you supported the technology behind our remote learning. We got computers in every student's hand, multiple computers sometimes, in every student's hand within a, within a short, a short timeframe. And then we also have now students that have been using the computer to engage a classroom, to engage their colleagues, or teachers engaging colleagues, students engaging students, all use the computers. So they have that knowledge base, so we want to continue that on. And so that's an important piece, is that prior to this, if you would have came to me two years ago, I might have said, maybe we don't have the infrastructure in place to support this. Now we do, so we have this opportunity. And the last piece comes down to revenue. Anytime a student leaves, leaves our district or goes to either homeschool or goes to a school choice or goes somewhere else, they're taking revenue out, out of our districts. We want to keep revenue inside our district. So now that we had the interest, now we have to start building it, all right? And so like Ethan said, this application was first submitted in May. We got some feedback in June, and so for the past couple weeks, probably, probably two weeks, we have actually already started this work. And so Christina Galant will talk about the work that we've done, and while we're here to ask for your support so we can continue on this work and send this forward to the state. So thank you all for your support. I really, we do appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you again for having us. So we, to make sure that this school is ready to open and run successfully in September, we put together a steering committee of 15 stakeholders. These stakeholders represent K-12 educators, teachers, administrators. We're working with the Director of Special Education, Lori Mason. We're working with the Director of Bilingual Education, Kelly Jones, and the Chief Officer of Student Support Services, Sharon Wolder. In addition, we are working with the BEA, and specifically, the President of the BEA, Kim Gibson, and members of our instructional technology team. This team, the steering committee, has been working on five focus areas, making sure, again, that we are ready to up and run, to be up and running successfully in September, focusing on our mission and educational program, access and equity, our school culture and family engagement, our capacity and planning for success, and accountability and compliance. The next steps that the steering committee will take involve developing the schedule, policies and procedures in a student handbook, and next week, we will have an information session for families. It will be a virtual information session, June 28th, that's Monday, at 5:30 PM. So just to take a quick look at the timeline, what we've been working with, it has been a very quick turnaround. We submitted the application to the Department of Ed on May 6th, and like you mentioned, Desi came back and provided feedback to us on June 4th. The steering committee is working on responding to that feedback, and tonight, of course, you have the school committee vote. We have a deadline of July 6th to submit evidence of the school committee vote and the school committee approval and the final proposal on July 6th. There is information here, just this is a postcard that went out. This went out to our families who are homeschooling so that they can join us on Monday. Of course, the school being open to all students who are Brockton residents, anyone can join the session. So Monday evening, 5:30 at bpsma.org, we will have that information session for parents and families that have more questions. So if there are questions, we will take them.
Any questions by any of the school committee members? Ms. Minicello, please.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. We've noted as a committee that it's great to have options for our families here in Brockton, so this is a, this is going to be wonderful for, you know, some families who this, you know, fits their, 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 their need. So in terms of, so let's say that I had a student who, you know, for some reason, we need, we think we need a remote type of a situation, and let's say my student is in the ninth grade. So could you just tell me, like, walk me through, like, how this would look or how many instructors, teachers would be involved? So, so I guess take me through a ninth grader coming in and you identify them as, this is a person that this program would fit.
Right. So like we said, this is a program that's open to all Brockton residents, so it will be a K-12 program. Staffing will be based on enrollment, but we are working on, in year one, a fully synchronous model. But our goal is to work towards a more flexible option where there will be some option for asynchronous work built into that schedule so that students who have jobs, students who participate in various activities have the flexibility built into their schedule. So we are kind of using our remote learning experience as a jumping off point, but then building to improve that over time.
So let's, let's say I'm one of the Galactic Girls, and I end up on Mars in my, in my space house, and I want to be part of the Brockton Public Schools. So that, if we had the technology, that student up there could basically be involved?
Absolutely. If they have internet connection, and actually, that is a part of the school, is the district will be required to provide internet access free of charge to all of our students.
I'm glad that we're on the cutting edge. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions? Mr. Sullivan, please.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make sure the K-12 would be Chapter 70 funded? Is that, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mrs. Sullivan, followed by the Vice Chairman.
Hi, yes. I was just wondering, how do 45 students go virtual on other school districts? Because I didn't even know that was happening.
There are two Commonwealth virtual schools. So there is Greenfield and Tecca. So these are statewide. They're not local virtual schools, but they are statewide virtual schools.
And anybody can sign up for them?
I believe so, yes. Yeah.
And this was made years ago. The state came in after Greenfield made theirs, and the state came in and then added some additional requirements needed, and so they actually came up with that, with this district model after the state model was, was developed.
I didn't even know about that, but great job. I think it's a great idea. Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Ms. DiAgostino, please.
Well, most importantly, I want to thank all of you for the work you did on this, and it was a quick turnaround, and you all worked very hard to make it happen, and I appreciate that. I had the easy part, just signing off on things that were going to Desi after reviewing, of course, but you guys did, you know, a lot of great work and quickly turned it around, so thank you. But also, along the lines of just the whole thing, I mean, I think, you know, we've seen that there is a need and a desire for this type of learning now. We, we have the ability to do it, which we didn't before, so I think this just makes sense to, to go forward and have yet another offering. I mean, we have so many offerings in the Brockton Public Schools now. I think this, this makes sense and fits right in with, you know, the robust offerings that we, that we have. So great work, and thank you.
Yeah, that's a really important point. The superintendent stressed that we would have choice for parents, and one thing that I neglected to add was, Mike also wanted to make sure that there was a space, a physical space, so the teachers would be going there. So, you know, we learned that it's a lot easier to have, you know, tech support and just oversight and supervision if they're on site. So there is a building that, you know, Mike has graciously given to us, and so this is going to be different. So in fact, if there is a kid in Brockton who, let's say their house is, you know, just busy or, you know, just difficult to work, and they could actually arrange to show up at this site, have high-speed internet connection. So it's just, most, most people who want remote, want remote, but we, these are the advantages that we have over Greenfield or, you know, Walpole. I forgot about that.
Just to get a point of information, it's the old Rockland Trust near Wade Funeral Home up on North Main.
Reminder, I mean, I mean, you don't have to remind this committee, but you were the ones that supported this long before a pandemic. That's the reason we have that building, and we lease it because that was our vision for a virtual school. And this was almost a full year before the pandemic. I think it was the summer of, it was the summer of 18, or 19.
18 or, no, I think it was summer of 19.
19, the summer of 19. So it'd be, yeah, two years ago. It seems like it's the summer of 2001, but that's how long ago it seems, but.
Little did we know, we'd make the whole district virtual.
So, yeah, having that building is, again, the foresight of the committee. That was our goal way back.
Any additional questions? Cynthia?
Cynthia, I, I know you're on Zoom. Any, any questions or Tony? Okay. Thank you. Thank you all. Appreciate what you're doing.
So Dr. Cancella, we just need a motion to approve us, approve the application? Or just approval of the virtual school?
Motion to approve the virtual school?
Yep, just like that. Perfect.
It's motion on the floor by Ms. Minicello. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sullivan. We don't have to read a rule anymore. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have the approval of the supplemental in-service calendar, enclosure number seven. These are the in-service days or the half-days that June Saber McGuire and her team have looked over and over and over and over again. So these are the recommended dates for the in-service days. It also has the family school conferences for all levels for the fall and the spring. And obviously, it has our graduation. What we have to do is we have to update this and make sure we include, Melinda, we'll have to, this is draft, so we'll have to update it to include the Keith, the Huntington and the Edison. But this is the supplemental calendar, which is always at the, it's on the back of the district calendar every year.
Any questions relative to this? Mr. Sullivan, please.
Yes, I just had a question on the release time in service is professional development days?
Correct.
Those are used for that?
Absolutely. The only one, that is an early release. I don't think it's listed on here anyway. There is an early release on Good Friday.
Yes.
That is not for PD. That's just, everyone gets out at their early release time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Ms. Agostino, please.
So I just want to be sure. Any motion to approve this would also have to have in it, I would assume, the caveat that Keith, Huntington and Edison get added?
For the graduation.
For graduation?
Yep.
Okay.
We'll make sure that that's in there before it's final.
It's standing motion?
All right. Motion to approve the Brockton Public Schools 2021, 2022 supplemental calendar as presented, subject to the following change to the way it's presented. So I shouldn't say as presented, subject to the following changes to the draft that is presented. And that be that the graduations for the Keith Center, Huntington and Edison Academies be added on.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Agostino, it was properly second by Mr. Sullivan. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
And then next is the approval of the district calendar. In wording, as it would be the motion that was made tonight, you would be voting on to approve that from the Policy Subcommittee.
Mr. Agostino, please.
I'll just do a quick report of the Policy Subcommittee. We met this evening. And after some discussion, there was a, a motion made by the mayor, seconded by Mr., by Mr. Sullivan?
I think yes.
Yes. And unanimously approved with the following changes to the calendar as presented, that it be updated to include all federal holidays. That the, I believe, the November, the, okay. That the November recess actually be changed back to the Thanksgiving recess. Winter recess, as stated on the presented calendar, be changed to holiday recess. And we also approve for the new cultural calendar to be distributed with this calendar when it, when it's distributed. So that was the, the motion and the favorable recommendation from the Policy Subcommittee.
You standing a motion on that?
Motion to approve the recommendation of the Subcommittee.
Second. Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Agostino, was seconded by Mrs. Sullivan. Any questions on that? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that is the end of the report of the Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Do we have any items to refer to Subcommittee this evening? I don't believe we do. We'll move on. Unfinished business, which is Agenda Four. Any unfinished business? Mr. Agostino.
I just wanted to real quick remind everybody who has not yet turned in the superintendent evaluations that we need that in ASAP so that I can move forward with compiling that and we can get the proper evaluation done. I'm going to, I'm trying very hard not to have to do any committees of the whole during the, during the summer, but unfortunately, this one will, will have to do. So just please get that in ASAP.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Anything else? Mrs. Sullivan, please.
And we just have to review on policy manual, section L. So. That's unfinished. Yeah.
We didn't get to L tonight.
That's right. We have to go back. Okay. Okay.
So we'll reschedule, we'll send it policy.
Thank you. I forgot about that, Judy. Thank you very much.
Melinda will work with Mrs. Sullivan to schedule that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Mr. Sullivan, please.
One quick question to the Vice Chair. The diversity equity meeting, is that going to be rescheduled?
Oh, the diversity training? Yes. Yep. That will be rescheduled. We don't have a date yet, but that will be at some point over the summer. There was just too many scheduling conflicts to try to get it done in June. But we will get that done and get that completed. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any other unfinished business? Seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda Five is new business. Approval of proposed revisions to various provisions.
I can give a little report on that. I can give a little report on that.
Please do, Mr. Sullivan.
Tonight, the policy manual committee met and we went over sections C and D. C is general school administration and D is finance. And we recognized the changes and the Subcommittee voted to accept the changes on section C and D. And section L, we didn't get to because of time. So we will do that, follow up for that. So I don't know if we need a vote for the whole committee?
Yes.
Okay. So I make a motion to accept section C and D for the school committee policy manual.
It's motion on the floor. Is there a second on that?
Second.
It's a motion made by Mrs. Sullivan. It's properly seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Any questions on the, on the motion? Seeing none? All in favor? Please raise your hand. All opposed? Raise your hand. It carries. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Agenda Six, executive session. We do not have any executive session tonight. Seven is adjournment. Who wants to make that motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Mr. Sullivan. Who's seconding it? Mr. Rodriguez, did you second that? Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. All in favor of adjourning? All opposed? It carries. Thank you. Drive carefully. Have a good night.